We're on. Okay, well, meeting will come to order. Welcome. We are obviously having a joint school board, city council meeting this evening. It's a good thing that some of our members are absent. This is our first time doing it up here at the dais and we're all squeezed in, but that's a little easier with, I think, three people gone. If we were all here, we'd really be cozy. So, why don't we begin with roll calls on both sides?
Well, in fact, let's, if we could start with the school board, I am going to call to order our meeting because we're going to have both this meeting and a meeting after. So, calling to order the regular meeting of the school board and asking for a motion to approve the agenda for the study session with the Mercer Island City Council. Adele or Dave? Say a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, great, thank you. And, obviously, Dave and Adele are both here. Brian, I assume, was on his way and Pat Breenan is out of town, so won't be joining us.
All right. So, are we on roll calls?
Yeah. Councilmember Mike Searle.
Here.
Councilmember Debbie Bertling.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Passett.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Gross.
Here.
And Councilmember Mike Grady.
Here.
And you do, Mark, on the roll call for school board? Or are you all set?
We're all set.
Okay. Well, we're gonna be bouncing back and forth. This is obviously not very well choreographed going in. I'll mention, for the audience, we have a number of items this evening, the large majority of which are informational items. So, should anticipate, I say audience, but council and school board as well, this is going to be a lot of information input to us this evening. And so, sit back, relax, don't expect you've got big policy questions to address, and instead be prepared for data coming in. With that, we'll move to the first item, proposed facilities master plan and related development issues. And whoever's got this, who's got that?
All right. Thank you, President Frommeyer and Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the board. It's very exciting to be here this evening. I look forward to these joint meetings that have happened often in April and in October. And this is an opportunity for me to tee up a conversation that I know that other board members will want to amplify and talk about a newly reached consensus on a possible bond for some time next year, perhaps. And the newly reached consensus has to do with a pared down set of projects from where the board once was a year ago, this time of year, to a set of really three major options, or three major expansions. The first is to build a new elementary school, elementary number four, on the property that is known as the North Campus. The second part of this consensus that's been reached is to expand Ironwood Middle School. And this expansion would be in the form of designing a new school and then building essentially half of this new school. That would consist of 14 permanent classrooms in addition to other permanent learning spaces such as the gymnasium, a student center, student commons, and other improvements to the school. And the third project is to expand Mercer Island High School by adding anywhere from eight to 10 additional classrooms to be able to handle the growing enrollments that, A, we presently have, and B, that are projected into the future. I would say that for Mercer Island High School, when the school was remodeled and designed in the mid-1990s, the program design of that remodeled school was for 1,200 students. So, the numbers of science labs, for example, was designed for that many students, and we had nearly 1,400 students. So, as we look to the future, we are anticipating additional growth, and these classrooms would address present unmet needs, present program needs, in the form of additional general classrooms as well as science labs, and will be able to poison us for handling additional enrollment down the road. So, where the board started a year ago at a much more ambitious set of proposals, this really reflected deep work. And I truly congratulate the board for all of the work that began essentially following the bond failure of last year. And they had a series of meetings with architects and planning, and planning the mega block, and engaging the community through a whole series of processes that helped arrive at this, these three proposals. That totaled about $70 million. So, with that, I would just turn it over to the board to have other conversation with city council in the hopes that the city understands the needs that we have and asks questions as needed, and perhaps we can move forward together.
So, this is probably the first time many of you on the city council have actually heard an update on where we're at. It has been almost a year and coming, as Gary said, has involved a lot of listening and a lot of learning and hopefully a lot of collaborating with the community to come up with something that we believe both needs, the overcrowding needs, and is something that would, is possible to pass on a bond, which is another important part of making things happen. So, I'll kind of throw this open for comments and questions. Mike?
Question. I appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and I know there were many a late night expended to put this together. My question is, where? Because I've got a good feel for the what, but I'm curious as to where these various facilities are gonna be and what are some of the options that the board has been discussing?
Well, I'll work from the easiest to the most complex. The high school addition will be obviously at the high school, and the middle school would also be at the current middle school location, the school. The new school will be designed for that site, and then would be, the first phase would be built.
Do you have a, the interesting demand, I suspect other council members, we know that it's a redesign and half construction, but half retention of the existing facility. But, do you have a drawing that shows where things were?
We don't. We haven't gotten to that place yet.
Okay.
We are in the process of developing the educational specifications, so the kinds of facilities or learning spaces that we need. And following that work, and that work is actually going on now, we will have some schematics that we can share with the board and certainly with the city council. If you're interested in having Janet or I come, or you'll be able to access the information on the website.
Okay. And the same, then, I guess, with respect to the high school classrooms?
That's correct. If you do happen to go online on the facilities page, you can see a presentation that Merlum Architects, and we'll actually have a presentation this evening during the board's later session, talking about the ed specs process. But there are materials online, and I'm happy to show you where they are. Okay, thank you.
And in terms of the elementary school, I think in the draft proposal, we have been defining the locations on North Mercer Campus. However, there's not, there's not 100% unanimity. I think there's still some questions, at least Brian's part, about that location. And I'll let him speak for himself, but I think the majority of the board is comfortable with a school being sited at North Mercer. And, but we are, as a board, working towards a unanimous bond approval. We didn't achieve that last time. I think we learned that that's a very important element, and we've certainly heard from the community that that's something that's important to them. So, I would say we're, that's where we are.
I mean, I have expressed to the board a number of concerns about the North Mercer site. I met with the architects and shared those concerns, and, you know, I have great confidence in the architects that we're working with, and I think they understand what those concerns are, and I'm hopeful they will, you know, find solutions that will allow us to get to a unanimous vote. But, you know, I've made it pretty clear that I'm not there yet with regard to the North Mercer Campus because of some of the concerns I have about the location, and because I still remain disappointed that we didn't explore some other alternatives that I still think are, you know, potentially viable. And I think with a decision of this importance for the city, I would have liked to have seen more and would still like to see more interaction between us to understand if there are potentially other options that, that avoid the, you know, avoid tying up more property on the mega block and potentially could better serve the town center population.
I think that all those other options that we explored cost money, and we got the message loud and clear last year that we don't have a blank check, so to speak. So, if we did have a blank check, I'm sure that we could find property that we could buy and be more attractive, but we don't have that option currently.
What can we do here this evening that helps your process?
Well, you know, my issue was, last summer, we set up a joint process to explore the alternatives, and where the ad hoc committee was gonna explore some of those options, and that process basically got cut off before it started, partly because the city, the evaluation of potentially moving city hall, you know, died, or at least went into a very deep coma. And the other option that we asked to explore was to see if it was feasible to potentially site a school in Mercer Dale behind where the recycling center is. And that never got out of the starting gate. We never did any evaluation of that. And I know that there's, you know, there's a lot of potential issues with that, a lot of concern on the council as to whether that would be viable. But I, you know, would, you know, I'm not convinced that it could not be done. And I think that if it could, if there was a possibility to put a school there without disrupting the main area of the park, that there would be huge advantages to the city to consider that, to have a school that's within walking distance of the town center, and to be able to serve that population. I mean, I assume you all noticed the five-story apartment buildings popping up in the town center like the weeds in my yard, and I think it would be very, it would enhance the livability of the, of the city if there was a, if there was a school that they could walk to, so people could live there and dine and shop and get their kids to school without having to get in a car. And, you know, I think that's something that should have been, you know, should have been explored further. But, you know, I realize I may be in the minority on that, but, you know, I have to kind of go with my gut and, you know, and just say, I'm, you know, I'm gonna keep an open mind about what the architects come up with on the North Campus. But I would like to have seen that option explored, and still would like to see it explored. And just to know, just so we know, is that an option or not? Is it possible? I'm not convinced that it's not. I'd like to know so that we could move forward and then have confidence that the North Campus, you know, is in fact, or isn't, that it, that is the only option that's available to us. But, you know, pretty big island, and, you know, I think that we may have excluded, excluded that too prematurely without having any real professional analysis done.
Maybe we start with the easier one, what I think is the easier one, and that's the city hall site for a moment. Rich, would you be prepared to kind of speak to how things ebbed and flowed on the, on that? I'm catching you totally off guard here, so feel free to beg off if you don't, if you don't want it.
Just keep rambling a bit, and I'll think of something to say.
See if you can recollect the words.
That's, I'd be happy to. When the notion of city hall, perhaps moving into the town center, started to surface, that was at a time when we were working actually on another project, what we called the TOD, or Transit Oriented Development Project, partnering with Sound Transit and partnering with a private developer and a property owner to see if there was a way to redevelop a key site downtown and get additional commuter parking. And that site became the Walgreens site. The developer and the property owner spent over a year talking about a project. Early on in that process, we raised the idea that what if, in addition to the commuter parking facility that Sound Transit would pay for, if city hall became the prime tenant? They wanted to have mixed use with offices or residential or retail. And we raised the idea of what if the city was a prime tenant there? They explored it, they did some analysis, given the kinds of square footage that we would need, and came back with a number that, as I think you probably have found, sticker shock, just in what it cost to do new construction. So, since we had no other source of funds to do this at the scale that they were talking about, the city council quickly determined that we're in a functional building and we're likely to stay here. So, we didn't pursue that any further. The property owner and the developer continued to talk about a mixed use project all the way up until about two weeks ago, when the developer finally decided that the property owner, that they weren't gonna come to agreement on the value of the land and that their long-term interest in terms of the tenants did not include redevelopment. So, for now, that project is off the table, and we are gonna stay here.
I would comment that I don't think anyone disagrees that the North Mercer Campus is congested and that adding another school, of course, impact traffic flow, et cetera. But, there doesn't seem to be a willingness to fund the acquisition of property, and none of the sites that we looked at that are off of West Mercer are owned by the school district, so we would have to add that property acquisition into the bond, which would increase the price tag. And many citizens hold the school district responsible for the sale of school land that took place 25, 30 years ago, before most of us even lived here. And that's, that's a reality we have to live with.
Well, that's, yeah, I understand that. There are, you know, there are options that wouldn't necessarily be a dollar outlay from the, you know, from the district, including trading land, you know, trading part of the North Campus with the city for potential use for fields or recreational space. You know, the South Mercer Play Field is something that's currently owned by the school district but is basically used as a city park. That, you know, that's a possibility. There's another option that, that I actually think is the best scenario of all, but that's something we'd have to discuss in executive session, so I won't go into it now. But I think there are potentially options that could be explored to address that, to address that concern. But really, it comes, you know, it starts with just understanding if it's physically possible. I think it's hard to envision what that might look like. And I don't know if it's, if it's possible to site a school there and keep the park intact. That, you know, and I understand that is absolutely critical. That, you know, I'm not suggesting that we stick a school right in the middle of Mercer Dale Park. But to understand if in that area behind where the skate park is, if that could, if that could work, you know, I'd like to see some analysis done to determine if it's possible. If it's not, if the only way to do it would be to wipe out the park, then I'd be the first one to say, okay, dumb idea, let's not, let's, you know, let's not consider that further. But I'm just not convinced of that yet. I think this is an important decision. It's gonna have a long, long-term effect on the, on the city, and it's something that, you know, as leaders of the city, we should make, have a very deliberate analysis of the, of the options, and should turn that rock over and see if there's, see if there's, you know, if there's anything there. And if it, you know, if it doesn't pan out, fine, then I can move forward and be very, and be satisfied and, you know, and continue to work closely to make the Mercer option as best as possible. But if it, you know, but maybe there's, maybe there's something there, and I think that's what we should understand.
Well, and I know, part of the conversation that Brian is probably sick of having with me is, is the notion that, okay, so we do the analysis and it's feasible, and maybe it doesn't even cost a whole lot more. It's my belief that it still wouldn't be a viable option. And part of that is because it's already gonna be, it's already a heavy lift to pass a bond of any kind. Right now, what we're talking about is basically putting a school on land we own that has had schools there before. Contrasting that with encroaching on a park, which, you know, just has an emotional hurdle if nothing else to get over. So, and I, and I learned in the last bond that you don't have an opportunity to have a long conversation with everybody and explain the elegance of your solution. You have a headline or two bullet points. And I just feel like whatever we do has to be so, sort of digestible and understandable. We still have people that don't think we have an overcrowding problem, so that really has to be the message. So, we're letting you in on a lot of conversations that we've had over and over. And the interest is, we really do want to end up being a unanimous board in support of a bond issue. We think that's really important.
All right, let's go to Debbie and then to Mike.
Yeah, I mean, I very much appreciate actually hearing so much of the discussion. The one thing that does stay in my mind, on top of the issues of parkland and emotion and finance, et cetera, is also the survey that I believe was conducted by the, by the board. And as I recall, there was not a strong public move or support for Mercer Dale. It came second or third, third or fourth. I don't remember exactly the order.
And I actually asked Gary to bring some of that data just 'cause I knew there might be inquiring minds here.
Great, because, you know, there's what we want, but then I think it's also very important for us to go back to that important, you know, the groundwork that you did some months ago, post, post-bond.
Just give people a moment to, to look at that.
So, the white space between the light and dark blue and the light and dark brown, where the don't knows, they didn't have an opinion. So, you can see the most favored is the first on the property owned by the school district and a portion of Luther Burbank purchased private property, and then behind the skate park. So, you combine those two totals in 23, 38 percent. So, there's a significant don't know portion. And of the brown, of course, if you need 60 percent, some of the people who would be unhappy about that would have to move from that position.
Or just move.
Is that tolling you?
No, it's not. That was just a bit of levity. So, Debbie, will you still go on? I didn't want to cut you off, but Mike wanted to go next.
No, no, I think this was very helpful because, again, just to, just to have that refresh in terms of where public sentiment was, I think this is very helpful. Thank you.
Mike?
Procedural question. What do you want out of this discussion?
And what I mean by that is, we can go off on many different tangents. And do you, do you want us to come to a decision or somehow consensus on where the elementary school is gonna be located? Or is this just kind of a freewheeling discussion that is really not gonna get us anywhere?
It's a great, it's a great question.
Loaded question.
It's a great question. Mike Searle?
Let me say this, the council has already voted on this. Would the council be interested in, in bringing it back up and giving the school board the flexibility to talk about it amongst themselves in their own forum with the option of, of just looking to see if it's a feasible site amongst themselves, and then they can work out amongst themselves whether, given that opportunity, going back and forth, they can get a unanimous decision one way or the other. But I kind of, I kind of would not like the council to stand in their way of fully vetting all options.
Well, you know, I ask it because, you know, we obviously have discretionary authority over the park system. And to what extent, there are options that are being considered, like Brian's, to look at Mercer Dale, or you name it, you know, that there is parks on the island. I would want to know about that because, you know, as you are well aware, I am dead set against losing an inch of park space on Mercer Island. So, if there are any options that are being explored, that needs to be vetted with the city council and not just with the school board. And I don't mean that to be offensive, but I do mean that, you know, in terms of discretionary authority, we need to be real clear who has discretion over that property.
And my point is, is that it might not come to that point, but it might be beneficial for the board to have all options available. Because, you know, it comes down to priorities, and often we talk about the priority on Mercer Island being the school district. I think this is an opportunity to, to show that priority and give them a lot of latitude on where they might identify an ideal place to put another school, working amongst themselves, and it might not even come to the council. But I just don't like the idea of, of us, the council, limiting their options for the, the premium solution to their problem.
Hi, Dave.
I look at this more as a long-term plan, taking a few steps ahead. What are we gonna do when the town center becomes relatively built out? Is that going to be associated with more students in our schools? And what do we do then? Do we build a school in the town center someplace then? And, or do we just somehow make do and build another school on land we have already? As of now, the number of the students that are predicted can be accommodated by the plans that we have made. 10, 20 years down the road, I don't know. And that's where I give the city council some responsibility, because its council is actually planning the town center and planning for an increased population, planning for increased transit. So, I think that they would like the plan for where the school might be 20, 30 years down the road, rather than build on every square foot of land that's possible. So, in that regard, I would like to take a look to see whether it might be buildable to do something on, you know, the back hill of Mercer Dale, although I'm certainly not in favor of building on parkland. But as a long-term plan, it should be considered. We have to put schools someplace, and that's not gonna change. So, I think that what the school board is asking is, look, we don't have a consensus 100% on the school, on the board, to build on North Mercer Campus. Now, I considered all those things and made my piece. The school board seemed in favor, tolerable, of the North Mercer Campus. It didn't seem like a terrible, bad idea to me, but it didn't, you know, solve our long-term plans, our long-term issues of what happens when the town, the town center is built out. And this might be a little preliminary look on, well, what happens if it's built out? Should we consider that? Should we consider that now and then sometime later build another school on the North Mercer Campus or someplace else? Campus or someplace else? So, what the school board is asking, I think, in the context of the failure to get unanimity on the school locations is to say, hey, we'd like to get some unanimity. We'd like to take a look at that possibility. And for X number of dollars, which is gonna be a very small number of dollars, we can ask our architect to say, hey, can we build something on that thing with that $100 million into a big pier that holds the hill up? And, you know, the parking lots clearly gotta, gotta be underground and beneath the first floor of the school. And if that's gonna cost $60 million, it'll certainly be off the table. But to, to actually evaluate, it doesn't cost very much. That's all paper and it's all thinking about, well, what's going on. And if that's what it takes to make Brian happy, I'd be willing to do it. That's sort of the bottom line. The long-term plan is of what's gonna happen to the schools when the number of students reach 1,600, I'm sorry, 5,000 in total, is still up in the air. And we can make what-if scenarios, but ultimately they involve an additional building, however you slice it. So, I'm more interested in investigating it as a thought process almost now. I really don't think it's gonna be very fiscally possible. That's my gut feeling. But to look at it, it doesn't cost very much. And so, I just think that we should possibly look at it. The school, the city council doesn't have to do anything. We are well aware that nobody wants us to build on the parkland and you're still gonna say no this year and next year, I don't know, about 20 years from now. But, you know, when there actually has to be a solution, maybe, maybe the school population will go down and this will not be a problem. I don't know. Our projections don't go out more than 20 years. In fact, they don't go out more than 10 years. So, the way I feel is, well, if it just costs a couple of bucks to have an architect calculate what it costs to build a wall in a three-story school in that property, why go ahead and tell us what the answer is?
Dan, did you wanna?
Interesting discussion. Glad to see you guys are unified on this one. Yeah, I, from, as, as Dave just said, you don't need our permission to do anything you wanna do. If you wanna do a study, you should go do a study. You definitely don't need our permission to do that. I, I would, I would just tell you though that if you're studying something for the purpose of making a decision 20 years from now, I, I wouldn't, that doesn't seem to be productive because we've got our own decisions we need to make going forward, which, so you shouldn't assume that 'cause you do a study now, that land's gonna be still available 20 years from now. So, if you're doing a study, do a study for what you wanna do now. You know, and as, as Mike said, you know, we, it's not the city council, the city council's role should be to, to help as much as possible. That's where we started out in the summer and that process sure, sort of got short-circuited by the survey because although we were, and, and by what happened with the city hall situation. But the, we were heading down a road and then you got your survey and, and the message, at least I took from that, from what we were hearing from you at the time was, okay, the voters have told us in the survey what they want, so that's the direction we're heading. Which is, that was your decision to make and we were fine with that. But as, as Mike said, I mean, if you want the city, as we offered last summer, I personally believe again that we should be working with you to facilitate things. And if, if you wanna present to us an alternative, far be it from us to say you can't present it to us. And in that vein, as, as I told Brian before and I've told members, other members of the school board before, I don't understand why you don't look at Homestead as part of a land swap. It is, is a much better piece of property than Mercer Dale and it's literally three blocks from Mercer Dale. And it's, you know, it would have to be, 'cause I, like Mike Grady, I, I'm not desirous of losing parkland, but I see there's an opportunity for a land swap between the mega-block and, and Homestead. And it's, it doesn't have to even be a separate school. You know, you could put one school on there and divide it up between K through three and four and five, so you don't have that feeling of switching schools. I mean, I, I, this is your business, but I'm just, all I wanna emphasize is at least on my part, you know, if, if you want us to look at options, then present them to us. And we're not, we're not gonna sit here and just say, no, no, no. I mean, we're, we've made it clear in the summer that we're prepared to talk to you and to try to facilitate the development of another school.
Mike?
Mike? Can I make a suggestion? Instead of noodling on various sites, et cetera, maybe what we need to do is back away from this a little bit and see it to what extent we can develop kind of areas of engagement and general principles or assumptions that go into the discussions. Because, for instance, you know, I'm not against a land swap, but, you know, it all depends on where the swap is. So, those kind of things, I think, need to be incorporated in some document, like a development agreement, as you guys move forward to explore various options. 'Cause I'm not against looking at long-term plans and I certainly agree with you that, you know, as the downtown gets built up, the, it's certainly desirous to have a school right nearby where, surprise, surprise, kids can actually walk to school and bike to school and we don't have to bus them everywhere. And so, that's, you know, those are some of the assumptions or the principles that I would like to see embedded in a reanalysis if the group agrees to do so. The other is, you know, if we're agreeing to do this using tax period hours, you know, my push is gonna be, let's make sure that these facilities are as green as humanly possible. And because again, I'm looking at the long-term. You know, as I'm driving here, I'm thinking, so in 40 years, when these buildings are still operational, they should be as low energy, low water, low resource use as humanly possible. Because kids are learning that in the grade schools now and they're gonna pressure me and certainly you to do that. So, those are a couple of ideas. So, in terms of, you know, I'm not opposed to a land swap as long as we have the no-net loss of parkland. I'm certainly gonna push for bike pedestrian friendly and I'm certainly gonna push for make it lead standard as high as we possibly can go, again, looking at the future. And to what extent it can be close to the town center is certainly of an advantage. Does that make sense?
So, I'm gonna take a turn and then hand it off to you. I, I like that we need to figure out how we're gonna get through this conversation because we're, we're kind of shifting around and don't quite have direction yet. But I'm gonna throw out the way I think about this, we'll go to Mike and then maybe somebody by that time will have figured out the, the perfect way to sort of cut to a conclusion on this. The way I look at this is that with any project, and this is a big one, this school project is a big one, you have hurdles ahead of you. And I look at them kind of as visually real hurdles that you have to jump over to get to where you're going. In this case, you, with different locations, have different sets of hurdles. With the North Campus, you have a hurdle of getting to a school board that's united on it and then you have a hurdle of getting to a public that's gonna vote for it. And I, I look at this, I, I say, of the different options that are available, it's the best bet you've gotten. It's, it's looking pretty good. And of your school board, you're, you're just one shy of being there. I look at the, the Mercer Dale Park location and I see first that you've got a hurdle of a school board that's four to one against it. You've got a city council that's gone six to one against it. You've got a public that, my gut tells me you get a, a very concerted no campaign that grows around it. And it's backed, I think, by the fact that you, you're seeing here a no in the survey that says, we don't, we don't like it. It's big enough that it, it really makes it dicey to get through that, that process. And so, I look at, which way would I go? And boy, it's slam dunk. I, I would go to the North Mercer Campus and work that. And I would have everybody take Brian out back and give him serious arm twists because that is the biggest hurdle you've got right now is, is to get Brian there. But that's my way of looking at it. Mike, sir, over to you.
I don't have, I'm finished discussing that. I have another issue that is somewhat related, but not to the topics we were just talking about. So, if you're ready to stop on that, I'd like to bring something else up.
Let me suggest that, does it help you if we review council members' positions on Mercer Dale Park, the way I just have, for you, hearing from other council members? I, I think Dan's exactly right. If you wanna study it, by all means, that's, that's not our, it's not our place to say study or don't study. I, but I don't know whether it helps you if you hear from council members where they stand on this, we're missing two of them, of course. I, I did talk to them today about where, where they stand and I can tell you they stood, they stand where they stood. But we can do that or we can not do that. We can go someplace. Where do, where do you guys wanna go?
I'll let you answer it. I guess the other thing I wanna introduce here, just, I bet, you said exactly what I think, so thank you for that. That was very helpful. But in addition, I think we have to recognize that we're introducing a new cost here because if we basically put our process on pause to study and deliberate and eventually end up right back where we are, we're now possibly into the next year before we can have a bond and address overcrowding. And the other thing is, I think where we're at right now, the majority, is it's, it's not, it's an outgrowth of the public process. This is what our whole process has led us to. There are parts of it that if I got to have a magic wand and do exactly what I wanted, I might do differently. But I do believe that I have the best, we have the best package right now that really expresses the community's interest. So, anyway, on top of what Brian said.
Jan?
Yeah. I ever like to comment that although I agree with Dave about the projected school population, we don't know how big it's gonna get because we don't know the impact of transit. And the town center is being built up and that could have potentially fairly big numbers in terms of student population increases. But I don't agree it just costs a couple bucks to study this, it costs several thousand dollars. And I also don't really want to endorse a study of the potential for 20 years down the line because we don't know what the building codes are gonna be. We don't know a lot of other details that would impact the feasibility of any study that would take care, that take place right now. And in fact, if our student population gets to 5,000, we would have to do something about a middle school, which is another project, another building. So, that would be in addition to what we're addressing now. So, I would like to move forward because we have a significant capacity problem at the elementary school. We have a significant limitation on the quality of the 21st science education we can give to our students at the high school. We have a significant capacity problem at the middle school. We need to move forward.
So, maybe we go Dave, Mike, and then we say we're on to the next topic and...
Yeah. Bruce, Janet and Dave have gone over this as a decision that has to be made and executed as soon as possible. I agree, we do have to build a new school as soon as possible. But I'm discussing this on a much more of an academic level in terms of discussion. What am I asking right now from the city council? I'm not really asking anything from the city council except to make them aware that some people on the school board are considering this as a possibility. And no action is requested or necessary. It's in the academic sphere. And in the academic sphere, it's not directly related to what we do in two months. And that's why I brought up the long-term plans. People blame me for selling Tarrywood 30 years ago and selling Mercer Dale, not Mercer Dale, the City Hall, the, the community center site 20 years ago. And I'd had nothing to do with it because I wasn't down on the school board then. But we have to take blame for those decisions. And in an academic sort of way, I'm interested in looking at what's next 20 years from now, even though, you know, chances of me being around are slim. Chances of somebody being around are really, really good. And I think that it's, I, I think that, maybe not us, but, but we as a group, we're all on Mercer Island and, which is unique, almost, in school board and city council boundaries. And we should together somehow try to figure out what we're gonna do if the number of students increases. And I'm not talking about details of how many people go to the middle schools and do we divide middle schools and things like that. I'm talking about basic stuff like where do we build a next school? Do we have a plan for it someplace? And in an academic way, I'd like to just beat that around. Not necessarily now instantly, but part of that is to say, hey, I wonder how much it would cost to build on such a place and get an answer. Now, that answer may be, I expect it to be really high and not doable right now. But in the realm of things, when the city count, city, uh, sorry, the town center's built out, you know, we might look at that and say, hey, well, that's gonna be the cost if we do something like that. Maybe we should do that or maybe we should think of something else. And it's something that just ought to be talked about and looked at. And I don't know if it would cost a lot or a little to do it now for the school board, but that's sort of between us. We can talk about it and decide. Right, that's between us guys and I really don't, you know, it's not you. But the idea that us guys and you guys are gonna have a conversation about where to build a school 10, 20, 30 years from now after the town center is built out is something I think that is very important to do, but we don't have to do it today.
Mike, sir?
Well, that's a good segue of what I wanted to conclude on. And I think it involves the council on our long, long-range planning with reference to our comp plan. I'm uncomfortable when I look in the future for Mercer Island with reference to our level of service that we give to schools and education. So, for instance, in 2000, from 2000 to 2010, our consensus increased 663. I'm recalling these numbers from memory, but for 2020, our comp plan has us with a population objective of either 26,000 or 24,000. Do you recall what it is?
I don't remember exactly the number. I, I, before you gave out numbers, I was gonna say 25, so...
I think it's 26,000, which I just am very uncomfortable with all the change that I've experienced from 2000 to 2010. That's only been 663. But we are, we have an objective. We have an objective. The council, the city has an objective in our comp plan. That's what we're going after, of going from 22,000 to 26,000. That's an additional 4,000. That's what our objective is, Dan.
It's not an objective. That just happens to be what we think is going to happen. We don't, we don't do anything to...
Well, okay, that's, those are semantics there, but it's on the books in our comp plan for 26,000 in 2020, which is right down... I think the council, given whatever is produced by this bond with the school, needs to really evaluate what our comp plan says and think seriously about pushing back on what our population either forecasts or our population objective is on the island. Because, you know, council, we're gonna have, I mean, I certainly respect council members, Grady's and, and Bassett's and actually everybody's on the, on the councils, allegiance or commitment not to infringe upon one square inch of park property. But there's, we're an island. We're an island. And you start needing more and more, if you wanna maintain the level of service of our schools, you bring on more people, more land gets developed and then the schools find that they need to build another school and it's either parks or nothing. So, I think somewhere in the comp plan, we need to have a very serious look at what we're being pushed by the GMA to accept on this island.
Mr. Mayor, can I wrap that up with a piece of information?
Sure.
The Growth Management Act requires us to ask the school district to comment on the com-
the comprehensive plan, the projections, and the impacts it would have on the school system. And that was true when it was written in the early '90s contemplating the development that we have today, and actually, the school district was asked, "What do you think?", and at the time, the answer was, "Yeah, we can adjust to that." We have to, under the state law, do an update, formal major update, and re-ask that question. So in the next 12 to 15 months, you guys will have that conversation.
Okay, on that note, we need to move on. We have blown through the time estimate we had for this issue, and what I suspect we're going to end up doing, just so you know, is probably dropping the I-90 item so that we, because that one for the council will all be reviewed, and what we'll do is have Noel come to a school board meeting, if that works for you, and give you a presentation at your convenience. But with that in mind, what we're imagining is 15 minutes for the next one, 15 minutes for the pool, and then 30 minutes for the school safety item, and we'll try and keep ourselves on track with that. And with that, you want to tee up the next one?
So, next on the agenda is just a chance for us to talk about the potential impact of building a school on the north campus on the current tenants, so youth theater northwest, child, preschool, daycares. And I know you've already begun having some conversations within your board about youth theater northwest, so it's just a chance for us to all think about and talk about these valued community assets. And Gary, Rich, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I would just first want to thank Manny Collins, the executive director for youth theater, for very positive comments that I understand he made at a recent council meeting. Manny has been a great partner. He's been a longtime tenant, YTN has been a longtime tenant of our old facility there, and we have, Rich and I have worked together over the years to try to figure out what would be a viable other alternative so that youth theater could be thinking in the long term, should this eventuality happen, and that is that the district take back its public land for a K-12 purpose. So having said that, Rich, do you have any?
I could give a quick update of what the city has done in the last eight, nine months about youth theater northwest. The council has made it clear that it is a priority for us to see if we can assist YTN in finding the next home. And I, the council has been clear that that means, the degree to which we have information and influence on Mercer Island to help that happen, we'll do that. The council has not said that they're going to pay for a new home. So with that in mind, our first stop was to look at the former East Seattle school site, Boys and Girls Site on West Mercer, and we approached the property owner to see if there was any way that we could, if the city were to acquire that as public space and then provide land for YTN to put a performing arts center there in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. Could that happen? We explored it, we did not find an agreement just in price. It was just more than the council was willing to step up to. We then moved to, many of you are aware of the site at the corner of 76th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 24th in the town center, Freshies Seafood. That's actually two parcels, one privately owned, and the other, the green space, is city-owned. If you combine the two, you have enough room to do something with. The private property owner is a developer, and he had proposed a mixed-use development that included space for YTN, a little bit of retail condominiums above, and some parking, and asked if we would partner with our part of the property to see that happen. So that's a possibility, the costs were, at the time, maybe more than people, they were a little surprised, and YTN, I think, backed away to look for other options, but that one still is out there. Then the city council, at its retreat in January, directed the deputy mayor and I to go look at the bicentennial park and recycle center site as a possible potential performing arts center with YTN, helping solve the parking problem that that would produce with some sort of a shared parking agreement with Farmers Insurance. Dan and I approached Farmers, and while they do feel like they are a partner with the community, and in fact, they have done many things to help support the community, they are not prepared to do a long-term shared parking agreement, that's not in their future. So I reported all that back to the council last Monday night, and after a dozen or so, kids got up and loused everybody with their public speaking abilities as a result of YTN. The council directed me to spend some time working on site feasibilities with regard to the recycle center site and bicentennial park, looking for a way to solve the parking issues in and around the south end of the town center. Also to continue to talk to the property owner, the Freshies, to see if that project still has legs to it. And then finally, to see if there's any siting possibilities on the community center site. You know, we own both the community center and Luther Burbank, and if there are ways to site it that would work, at least take a look. So I will go out and get an architect, site planner, to take a look at all three of those and report back to the council, just the initial feasibility at the council's June retreat, and we'll see. So, summary, city's working hard to try and find a place, and YTN knows that they are, they have to come up with a significant capital campaign, and that's the other hurdle, but we'll keep working.
Great, well, we really appreciate all the effort you are putting into this.
Okay, Mike?
As President Formar mentioned, we all get minimized down to soundbites and everything. I just want to really emphasize to the community and these folks out here, Farmers, has always been a fantastic tenant on the island, if you will, in supporting our, Rich, where the fireworks, couple years, I know they're on summer celebration.
They donate for, yeah, the summer celebration, always the Rotary Run, and.
Parking for the Fennel Market.
Summer celebration, yeah, car shows, they've been.
So there's an endless list of great things that Farmers has done for this community.
Yep. With respect to, anybody else, or with respect to other tenants, I'd just be curious if there's any more update, and if not, we'll move on. But Dave?
I just appreciate the city council taking on the youth theater, even though it's somewhat of an educational program. It's used by a huge number of Mercer Island students, about 2,000 a year, and although the primary function of education of the school board and school system doesn't encompass that, the students frequently take courses at the youth theater, and I think it's a huge benefit. If the city council can help them out, I certainly would appreciate it.
Dan, and Debbie?
It does, it does raise the question, as you said, David, it's got an educational component to it, and I think, I think the city is definitely recognizing that we need to address the situation and try to keep YTN on the island, but, you know, to the extent when you're, when you're thinking about what you're going to need to do to reach out to voters as part of your bond issue, you may want to think about, if there's a partnership between the school district and YTN, much like you did a partnership with the Peak Project, that might make sense to throw some capital dollars towards. I agree with Rich that the big effort's going to have to be made by YTN, but to the extent that there's opportunities to assist them and at the same time potentially increase public support for what you're doing or what we might be doing in other areas, it's something to think about.
And I'd like to just add in, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this topic goes back several years. The city and school board have been talking about the preschools, Maryway Pool, YTN, over time, and the, our tenants have been notified four years ago that there was a possibility that the district would need to repurpose its public school land for public school purposes. And at that time, I recall, we were in a joint session where the school district agreed that it would take on the responsibility of the pool when Northwest Center chose to get out of the pool business, and because of our swim teams and the fact that it's a great community asset, we have, and that's obviously the next topic on the agenda, and I know that the city council at a session just like this a few years ago, there was a show of hands as to whether or not there was either board or city interest, and with appreciation, the city said, yes, there were four of us that were interested in working that. And Dan, I agree that a partnership could happen, but we're not driving that. We've got plenty of work on our plate, finding permanent facilities for the numbers of kids that are not in permanent facilities presently. So I think I'm open to working with the city, and I believe the board would be open to these ideas, but presently, we're not driving that process, and appreciate really the efforts that Rich and members of the council have made in trying to find a permanent home for a very worthy organization.
So we're going to Debbie, and then we'll use Gary's segue to move to the pool.
I think it's great progress that's being made on youth theater, just based on the, you know, the number of sites that are being discussed, the enthusiasm that comes from the school district, and certainly the community that we saw Monday night. I also know that we'll get to the pool, which is at least equally beloved by many, many people. What I would appreciate is an update in terms of what assistance is being given or direction to the other tenants there, which are perhaps some of the more silent yet critical pieces of our community, particularly for those with young children, so that would be helpful.
The update that I would, I would share, Councilmember Britlin, is that I believe it is Pixie Hill, if I'm not mistaken, has relocated to a new venue across the street. I know that there are other organizations, without naming them by name, that are actively pursuing permanent spaces for the future, and we are helping as best that we can. And perhaps we will think about whether or not the board is interested in having any preschool slash daycare facility as part of Elementary Number Four, should we proceed with building a school on the north campus or frankly, anywhere that the venue has been identified. So I think those are still open, and it's an organic conversation, I don't think we've shut the door on any one particular idea.
And Gary, I do hear in conversation with the director of child, and you shared with us that they're, they're looking.
Well, they have been for a while, that they have been looking for a permanent, for land to be able to place a school. That's not a secret, I don't know where that location might be, but they are, they realize that at some point in the future, it is likely that the district will repurpose that land back to K-12 use. So I feel that we've sort of turned a corner from four years ago where there was shock and disappointment, and in some case outrage, that the district might need to repurpose that land, to understanding that there is a need to build schools. And it's unlikely that we're going to take South Mercer Playfield, given that it's a playfield, and use that for a school facility, but that we do have a north campus that is still viable. So I think we've made some great headway in that regard.
Can I just point a clarification? These other childcare institutions, are they looking on island, to the best of your knowledge?
I don't have an answer to that. I know that the one that obviously is, did share that they were looking to keep a local venue for local residents. I don't know that for a fact, though.
Okay. Because in some respects, I see this as somewhat similar to the outcry, again, the passion and the commitment we heard from the community over the true value. And to me, that was very interesting because there is such a sense of community, and there are some long-term and important community players that help make us what we are, that help us, I think, bond in many ways more than just buying some paint, and in this case, just dropping your children off at a preschool program or a daycare program. So in a similar vein that we discussed with regard to true value, I would very much want the city to also express its support, its help, its open door in an undefined way at this point, but to ensure to the best of our abilities, we do keep those organizations on the island and understanding the degree of value that they bring our community.
Okay, with that, on to the pool, I think.
So the segue to the pool, this is the second year, I'd like to introduce John Walker, who will be moving over to the FAR podium, and this is actually a good news report, and when Rich and I and Janet and Bruce sat down.
As opposed to all the other reports.
Yes, yes. This is a good news report because as Councilmember Britlin mentions, this is an asset that so many people count on, not only our swim teams, but community members come and use that pool on a daily basis. And it is an aging structure. We had recently a breakdown that was potentially a school, a pool shutdown type of breakdown, but we avoided a catastrophe and were able to make some, at the time, some short-term modifications that eventually worked very, very well. So this evening, we have a contractor that OCA is a school district contractor. The school district owns and operates Maryway Pool. We subcontract with Olympic Cascade Aquatics to do the actual day-to-day management and operations of that pool, and we are very grateful to the city of Mercer Island for the inter-local agreement that we have with you as you provide up to $125,000 a year in operating subsidy. So we're managing the rebuilding of the infrastructure and maintenance, and the city is committing to an operating subsidy to keep the pool, quote, afloat.
Just, Mayor, really quickly, I'd like to underscore, this was a disaster coming, the pool was about to close. In a span of about four months, Gary and I put together a partnership and brought it back to you to save the pool, and that partnership has held now for, we're in the year three. And so you'll hear from John, our operator, they've done a great job, and they want to keep doing that. If there is an ask from you, it's that you guys just nod your heads, bring back an updated extension to the inter-local agreement that keeps this partnership going on the terms that we've, we currently have for, to keep the pool going, keep it healthy, keep it strong, and keep it funded.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John, who's going to give you a high-level overview of the operation of Maryway Pool. So, John Walker?
Thank you very much. As mentioned, I'm one of the owners of Olympic Cascade Aquatics, and my partner is in the front row, Alice Godford. We were very happy to be a part of this, this community response to a crisis and pool scenario that happened about, whatever, two years ago. As Gary outlined on my next slide completely, you know the long-term history, but where we are now is we've got a great scenario going with a good partnership as a contractor with the school district, and excellent, very strong support from, from the city of Mercer Island. Thanks. A little technology pickup here. Wrong way. So essentially, we really, really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. It's a very positive story. You know, the pool doors are still open, which was number one, that we really, a lot of players put a lot of energy into that in a unique way, and we want to look towards the future to be able to continue that. But the focus was just to give you an update of our adventure, positively adventure in 2012, and maybe answer any questions you have about where we're at. The usage summary for what happened in 2012, the pool is a busy place, extremely busy. We still retain the schedule that was the focus of the city's desires for public access. It has the same public swim access as it did in 2012. It has the same public swim access as it did in December of 2010, approximately eight hours a day of lap swim and open swim to the community. That was retained, and it will continue to be a primary focus of the pool's schedule. It serves, as you know, as the home of our championship, Mercer Island High School swim teams and water polo teams. Great participation in those sports, and obviously, great competitive success. We, this, in 2012, we put a significant effort into expanding and improving our instructional programs. Those were redesigned, and we had great results with that, and the participation was up over 30%, and we were able to give the community many more options, and hopefully, a better, more quality program. We hosted over 40 events for high school programs. We're not just the home pool for Mercer Island High School, in our hearts we are, but we also serve as the home pool for the Bellevue School District and the Kinko and the Sea King District competition. So there's a lot happening to support the high school programs. In addition to those high school programs, we had 26 different community groups that rented pool space for their different aquatics-related activities. Wide range, anywhere from the swim team scenario to canoe kayak or diving, or all across the aquatic spectrum, served a lot of, a lot of great activities, and several were safety-related and youth-related, which is one of our focuses. We also provide periodic space for, you know, some of our community programs, you know, whether it's training for our fire department and our marine patrol, or the child programs that they run as far as their activity programs. Facility hours this year, we continue to chip away and find more opportunities to keep the pool open more. We're over 100 hours a week now, and it's, it's busy. You know, it's come by some evening from between 5:30 and 8:00, and it's a lot of chaos, but it's a lot of fun, too. Financial results, this is always challenging. This is part of what created the difficulties at the beginning of 2011. We had made some progress here, but still, the net result is a negative, which is not our objective, but that's kind of the reality of the financial dynamics. We did have the highest revenue in the history of the pool, so we're continuing to improve that. That's primarily from increased usage of the facility. Just a few things we wanted to highlight here as explanations, or more background, the public revenue, which is basically anything outside of the city of Mercer Island's support, was up 15, over 15% this year. On the positive side, that came from our efforts in the instructional area, our youth fitness and instructional programs, you know, increased revenue, about 40%. On the downside, the negative side, you know, our open swim and family swim time seemed to reduce about 10%. And we're still trying to figure that one out. We'll continue to make it a priority, maybe price sensitivity, because we made a price change in that area. Second thing I wanted to point out is our staffing expenses. We're up 2.6%. That's actually something we're happy about. A large majority of our, that represents almost 45% of our operating costs. A large majority of that cost comes in employment that's pegged to basically the minimum wage, and last year's minimum wage increase was 4.2%. We had some good results. We also had another expense in that the restructuring of our programs took a lot more man-hours, and so we overcame those two things, and that was done primarily through some increased efficiencies, our staff taking on some, some things that we contracted out previously, and then we also had good experiences on the state labor and industry ratings that helped us on the tax side. But as I said, that's about 45% of our expenses. About 30% of our expenses are in utilities. Utilities expenses this year increased 2.7%. We also feel that that was a very positive thing. Our PSE expenses were, increased 3.4% over last year, and city water went up a little bit, too. But we were still able to, through a couple scenarios, mainly focusing on some of the projects we're working on to increase energy efficiency and some staff initiatives, we were able to claw back a little of that increase. The maintenance and repair area, this is actually a very small percentage of our budget, maybe 2%, but I wanted to highlight that, because we've had an outstanding support relationship with the school district's facilities staff, led by Tony Keen, and that they put a lot of work into the future of the facility, and this is just a small indication in that area, most of those results, about 34% drop were from efficiencies, whether it's better use of toilet paper to, you know, what we're doing with the HVAC system. So they put a lot of energy, the pool would not, doors would not be open without their efforts. So I just wanted to plug that success and hope we'll continue on with some of the projects that we're working on this year.
Now, I just want to point out to the council that, as John mentioned, that's a good news story, even though there's a deficit of nearly $10,000. But this is the second year of experience, and it is less, it's less than half than a deficit from the prior year, which was in the first year of experience. So the city has placed a $25,000 reserve in the event that the model needs to tap into that reserve, and so we've made an improvement in year two, and largely, really, it's Alice and John's leadership in the business model that they're getting butter and butter at. So kudos to you, John and Alice.
Thank you. Talking about the accomplishments that we had last year, our safety record, you know, our safety focus is number one, even above keeping the doors open, and we were successful again. We, you know, some of that is very hard work, some of it is luck, but we hope to continue that into the future. Also, as Gary mentioned, our financial results, although negative, were substantially improved over the deficit of 2011, and that was in the face of some inflationary headwinds that we had to deal with. We spent a great deal of time and a great deal of focus in redesigning our instructional programs and our youth fitness, and trying to combine them into a developmental program that was higher quality and also served more people with more options. And I think that was successful, although, although we still have parts that we need to fill in, and we look for that to continue to improve and to continue to be a priority for us. Facility usage increased, and almost across the board. There's a couple areas that we're going to focus on, but a lot of people are using the pool over a lot of, a lot of the weekly hours. Extended the hours of operation. We'll continue to look for opportunities where we conserve the community and put more people in the water and keep the lights on. And then we also, you know, one of the stories of the adventure part of this is, we continue to wrestle with the infrastructure and some of the deferred maintenance issues. We had many successes there, but many sleep or laying awake at night, thinking about some things that could happen, or what Tony was working on. But those infrastructure repairs, in December, we drained the pool for the first time in almost five years. That's a, that's a common dynamic, you usually keep the water in, but it helped us clean it up a little bit, improve our efficiency, and also evaluate some of the infrastructure things that are going to be facing us in the next, next few years through some video exploration and just looking at some things that you aren't able to look at with the water in the pool. And, you know, we're making headway. There's a long list, and still some substantial things in front of us, but we're definitely making some good progress in that area. Our challenges in 2012, inflationary pressures, we mentioned, and the economics of the business model, you know, we're very tied to the minimum wage dynamics in the state of Washington. We also are very tied to energy costs and the things that we really can't control at some level. And for aquatics facilities, insurance issues are also significant as far as inflationary dynamic. We had some security and trespass issues that took a lot of our time and energy, and were somewhat frustrating, but again, you know, Dean Mack and our partners at the school district really helped with that. We've installed, rekeyed, installed an alarm system, changed some of our, our staff protocols, and we really haven't had any problems in 2013, so we hope that's behind us. The infrastructure, you know, it was Mary Wayte's 40th birthday this, this year, and we just need to keep working with that and understand it, and try to figure out how to, how to get to 50 or 60 or whatever the community needs. So that's, that's a real challenge, and we still have a long way to go with that. Looking ahead, you know, from a financial perspective, we're going to continue to try to, to manage it as effectively as we can while balancing some of the dynamics of our contractual agreements and, you know, the objectives of, of safety and community service. So those are the things that we'll be looking at from a financial outlook. We, again, will have some, although not, not as severe as last year, we'll have some inflationary pressures on those areas I mentioned that we're going to have to try to, to work through. You know, from an operational perspective, we're going to continue to keep the focus on safety and providing a good recreational opportunity for the community and keeping the doors open. Those are, those are kind of the primary things. There's a lot behind that, but that's the basics. We're very, very proud to be a part of this solution to the problem, and we've appreciated our partnerships with the school district and the city. We hope to continue them going forward. This year and going forward, there are a lot of big issues and a lot of big challenges that face the facility. And, you know, we're in a situation where we would like to continue in the long term as part of this solution, but we are in a scenario where, you know, if you're solving the problems, we've, we've kind of gone after and went through all the low-hanging fruit of the issue, and we're actually very high up on the tree, honestly. So, you know, at this, this stage, we need to, I think everybody involved needs to have an understanding of where this is going in the long term, because it makes, you know, long-term planning and long-term commitments to the solutions very difficult. We're very happy to extend our two-year contract for 2013, and we hope you'll consider expanding the role for the long term.
Any questions that we can address or answer about the pool?
Actually, I just wanted to make a comment. I want to thank you both so very much. I think you've done a tremendous job. You know, as a school board member, I would comment that the state champion status of the swim team is, of course, wonderful to talk about, but the, the value of the swim teams are that they're a non-cut sport, and we have 60 to 70 kids on those teams, and they aren't all state championships, but the coaches did a wonderful job of bringing them in so as emerging young adults, they get to experience the joys of exercise, health, camaraderie, teamwork, and it's really a great program. And I want to commend you, because in a like manner, you have really expanded your fitness opportunities, so kids who enjoy swimming, understand that it's important to exercise, but yet really aren't competitive and don't want to go to swim meets, still have an opportunity to have regular exercise, and so I just want to express my appreciation and thank you.
Thanks. Other questions, comments? Mike?
And then Brian.
I'm going to echo those comments, because it's, it is such a tremendous resource, and it's a lifelong, as you know, a lifelong skill that they've learned, thanks to you. I guess it's more of an offer than a question. You know, as you're working on the infrastructure upgrades, and you have a need to work with PSE or the respective utilities, please feel free to come to us for help, because we're trying to leverage them as often as we can for various issues, and it's quite frankly, in their best interest to help us. So there are many programs out there now, and that they're contemplating to help reduce your energy load and find ways to conserve both energy and water, so please keep that in mind as you move forward, that you've got friends at the city that can help you with that, too.
Outstanding. Thank you. We'll definitely take, take you up on that. Well, on the end of the last slide, you indicated that there were, that Mary Wayte Pool facing critical challenges in the coming months, which is a little, a little scary. Do you want to elaborate a little bit more on that? And also, you said, you know, you would like to get a multi-year agreement. Is there anything blocking that, or anything that's required from us, the district or the city, in order to, you know, any specific steps that have to happen to, to do that?
I think I can, I can address the challenges comment, and probably have to look to Rich and Gary to address the second piece. The challenges that we're facing in the infrastructure, again, we've gone through a whole variety of things, both cosmetic and behind-the-scenes, but we're looking, we're now into the areas of the HVAC system, and more importantly, and more dramatically, the circulation system of the pool. I mean, 40 years in a, in a corrosive environment, it's hard to tell what's happening there, and if there's any type of failure under the pool, that's a pool closing event. We've also put quite a bit of energy into the boiler, which is, so far this year, is doing us a good job, but that's always a very high-dollar item. And those two things specifically, we would close the pool indefinitely unless a large amount of capital was put in. We just, we're trying to address that as best we can. Today, we just finished a two-day closure where we installed or replaced the piping that we can get to, or a good chunk of the piping we can get to with PVC, appropriate piping. And we also added an energy-efficient variable speed drive to our pump, which is, we got funding and from PSE to do that. So those things are things that we can get to, but what's happening under the pool is a question mark, and we've continued to address how to look at that and how to remedy that, but it's going to be a challenge. The facility, the building itself is 40 years old. Again, HVAC is a significant concern, but a roof and some of the supporting structures in a, in a humid environment is very difficult to predict. So we're kind, we're evaluating that. We have a very long list, but some of those fixes, again, it's, it's a question of where the resources are available and for how long we want to continue to keep the, the pool functioning, or this facility functioning.
I would just add to that, that this is new information for the council, and it's not new for the board, but for the council, the district is, you'll notice that in the bond discussion, we didn't speak about the Mary Wayte Pool need and infrastructure, or did we talk about improvements to the stadium? So what I have proposed to the board is to have the capital projects account, that was a levy that was approved in 2010. It's a six-year levy. It will come up again in 2016. There are two collections a year. We go to the capital projects fund to, to add the needed and rebuild the needed infrastructure that Mary Wayte Pool is so in need of. So between now and the end of 2016, and then as we, as the board considers the 2016 to 2022 levy, that's the funding source that we're able to then replace this aging infrastructure and be able to keep the life of this pool open for at least 10 and more years.
And if the school district's prepared to make that kind of a capital commitment, and our operator is prepared to make a commitment to continue to operate, what all that implies is that the city council consider making a longer-term commitment on the operating side, so that everybody can make longer-term investment decisions in a safer manner. So where we're heading is a new interlocal agreement, and this is your, the answer to your question, Brian. It was a short-term agreement three years ago. We now need to contemplate maybe a 10-year agreement that sets out these expectations on how to keep the pool on the capital and operating side healthy.
Okay? Dave?
Partly in response to Dan's comment about the new theater, I'd just like to point out that the school system is really doing heavy lifting on the Mary Wayte Pool here, and tying up our capital, potentially, capital levies. And for a project that has very significant school function, but it also has community function, I'd just like to point out that, again, the synergy between the city council and the school system is possibly because the borders are identical and we serve the same people.
Very good. All right, Mike?
Just a final shot. I had the opportunity and the pleasure to be at a function at the governor's office a few months back for the Olympic athletes, and had a chance to talk to Mary Wayte, and described to her the interactions going on between the school board and the city council, and she was very pleased, and is very interested in the upgrades that are being proposed.
So, so she aged 40, like the building, or?
No, she's aged very well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the report and for the service you've done to the community, for the community and the, and the school district. Uh, we move now, we're going to, as I said earlier, we're going to drop the I-90 tolling topic in, uh, and have Mary report to the, uh, school board at their convenience, um, since the, the city council's rather aware of where this one stands, in, in order to give us enough time to handle this last item, uh, which is titled briefing on school safety and partnership. And this, this one arises, uh, from my perspective, out of citizen, uh, interest in the wake of the tragedy at Sandy Hook into my, and so citizens were interested, approached me, I in turn said, what are we doing? It became an education for me and learning about what's happening. I think it's, there's a, there's a lot of information here and I, uh, my thought was it'd be perfect to have this be a topic for this joint session and so here we go.
And let me just add, uh, in addition, people approached you, um, after the tragedy. Gary initiated a safety audit for the school district. So, um, it was a chance to not only look at all the work that's going on, but also identify any areas where things might need to be tweaked or optimized. And that's been completed, I believe.
The safety audit has been completed and we also have a report from a, a professional, a school safety expert that the board will receive a, a report on, on the, at the May 2nd meeting. But I, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Holmes in just a moment. But, but I, I must say, this is another incredible example of synergy between members of the city, employees of the city and employees of the school district to create a safe, healthy environment for our youth. And this is, we are truly a, a standout. This is really a lighthouse type of partnership when one goes to events at national conferences and they cannot believe that a city council, a city and school district have the kind of partnership that we have that has gone on for so many, many years in the form of school resource officers, in the school, in the form of mental health counselors, the communities, the care coalition. And so this is truly a fantastic team, keeping the safety of our children foremost in the minds of, of everyone. So with that, Chief, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Great. Thank you very much. And for the record, Ed Holmes, your police chief. And with me, I have Dave Jokinen and Cindy Goodwin and Tony Kuhn, who will also share, um, on this topic. I broke it down into, or we broke it down into, um, just some simple slides. The first highlights the police department programs and initiatives that we are working on. Dave and I will speak to that. And then the safety audit that Gary mentioned, Dave and Tony will, um, highlight the safety audit that took place. And then Cindy will talk about the youth and family services and how they integrate in our schools. So this slide here again just highlights the partnership that we have and Gary had mentioned that. And for the police department. So I'll just run through these and Dave will help me out here, but that school resource officer is probably one of our most noticed programs that we have. We have a full-time police officer assigned to the high school, middle school and Crest. And that's a program that's very near and dear to my heart. I was our first school resource officer in 1996, so I'm very familiar with the program. Dave followed me in that same program, so, um, you have at least a couple of very strong supporters of that up here. The school resource officer basically serves as a liaison between the police department, the school district, juvenile court, youth and family services, and then does a lot of stuff with the school counselors and parents. So it's a position where the officer wears a lot of different hats. It's a fully uniformed position and, uh, really the, the goal of that position is to establish relationships with the students and staff. And a lot of the information that we get or the school resource officer gets is due to the relationships that the officer has with the kids. So, you know, I can cite a number of examples even from when I was the SRO of things kids would share with me or teachers would share with me that they might not otherwise share with just a police officer that they didn't know. So there's a lot of value with that relationship piece there. The idea is not to go up to schools to bust kids, it's to go up to the schools to really develop relationships and hear about things before they become problems or issues. We also do safety drills, school lockdown drills. Um, Dave and his officers and sergeants work with the schools on doing training. What does that look like? Um, we have occasionally had to put schools in lockdown and the training that they get is helpful for that. I might, maybe at this point I'll let Dave speak to some of these bullets here on the prepared response with the school mapping program and a few other things. And again, I just want to bring these to your attention and perhaps some of you are already aware of these programs, but if not, I think there's value in hearing what we're doing today, um, even before we get to the safety audit stuff.
All right. Uh, the prepared response, uh, system is a, uh, online critical incident planning and mapping system. It's a statewide, uh, program and, uh, there's probably over 100 facilities listed. Uh, majority of them are schools. They offer first responders, basically, uh, incident pre-planning where you can have , uh, units assigned to certain areas, you can have, uh, triage areas, you can have staging areas. So if any type of major incident happens in any, in any jurisdiction, uh, Seattle could look at this map and come to Mercer Island. Bellevue can look at this map. They all have access to this, this type of thing. And it's also used by the school district for planning, planning their drills. When we got together initially, probably about five years ago and did our initial planning, it was school district, fire department and police department who got together and put together this mapping system with, uh, with the state. And it's a very effective tool for, uh, emergency response. One of the other things that we have is, uh, remote school video access. We worked with the school district, uh, probably about three or four years ago and they allowed us to initially tap into their video system that they have, uh, at the schools with limited, uh, limited access for certain specific reasons. And since that time, we've been able to install that access into all of our patrol vehicles and also into selected, uh, computers here within, within the police department. Um, we haven't necessarily had a need to use that yet, but it'd be a very effective tool if any type of critical incident was happening in our schools and allow us to look in and, and see where things are happening. Um, active shooter training. We've been conducting active shooter training, uh, for numerous years on a, on an annual basis here on Mercer Island. Our special operations team, which is made up of our, our tactical officers, are the officers who conduct the training for us. We've done the training in several different venues here on Mercer Island. We've done it at the high school, at the middle school, at, uh, the JCC. It's, uh, basically officers doing a rapid deployment to a facility where there may be somebody inside that facility causing harm, uh, to individuals and, uh, that's what our goal is to get in there and to eliminate the, uh, the threat. So, um, one of the other bullets there is off-duty security. We're heavily involved with the school district. Uh, when they have basketball games or football games or, or other incidents that, that may be going on, that there's a, an concern to have additional officers up at that facility, we're, you know, working closely with them to make sure that those events go off quickly and effectively and smoothly. And then finally, uh, we'll be doing an emergency management drill coming up here at the beginning of June. It's our annual drill and that drill is going to involve, uh, active shooter type scenario. And, uh, our emergency officer, emergency management officer Jennifer Franklin is working with King County, um, in developing, developing that drill.
Well, I think, I'll let Tony start off with the school safety audit. How's that sound?
Okay. So after we did our security audit with the, with the Mercer Island Police Department, we kind of prioritized some of our, our findings and we, we've taken action on a few of these items. The door locking mechanism, one of the problems we were faced with is that teachers are unable to lock their doors from inside their classroom. They have to actually step out into the hallway and lock the door in the case of a lockdown. Um, we found a very simple device, um, that we have now installed at all three elementary schools that the doors are, remained locked at all times, um, but they're held ajar about a quarter of an inch, just to the point that they're not latched. So if, in fact, we do go into a lockdown, excuse me, uh, the teacher doesn't need to find their keys, they can go over and just basically, this, this lever switches down, the door closes and it's, it's immediately locked. Um, it was received very well by the staff at the three elementary schools. Uh, we are going to be installing these at the middle school as well. The high school, we are going to, uh, we're going to go ahead and install the, the actual locking mechanisms inside the door. Um, just with the age of the students, it's a little, I think it'll be received a little bit better with, uh, not having accidental, accidental lockouts. Video surveillance systems, uh, we're finishing up the specs for upgrading our, our, um, video systems. We are going out for an RFP next, uh, next week, so we're excited to get started on that. Uh, right now, we're looking at getting the system installed in the three elementary schools here, hopefully, uh, by the first part of summer. Perimeter improvements, uh, most of these will be done over the summer. They include additional fencing, uh, making gate improvements, uh, raising the height of some of the fencing around the district or around the schools and adding signage around the, the facilities as well, directing people to the main office, um, and, um, letting them know that they are entering a school district property. Uh, the additional training drills, um, the state recently passed a bill, uh, 5620 that has kind of changed the, some of the drill forms, uh, or the number of drills, excuse me. Originally, we went from, we were required to do five fire drills each year and one lockdown drill. This bill now requires us to do a minimum of three lockdown and three fire drills. Uh, reduce the number of fire drills. We already have been doing a minimum of three lockdown drills in our district, um, along with fire drills. A lot of times we will put two drills together on a single day, uh, whether it be an earthquake drill, uh, evacuation drill, different things. Um, and I want to mention that the police department has done a great job. They've been working with us at, at least one drill a year at each site where they come in, they take part in our drill. We kind of debrief after what worked, what didn't work, um, and that has really helped out. I'm hoping that next year we can also do that with the fire department. So we can kind of get the first responders' take on what we practice and we think we're doing great, but, um, you know, what's truly working and what's not working. So.
And we've also been doing these drills with the private schools here on Mercer Island, the Shiva, uh, Herschel and St. Monica's. We've, uh, gone up there and done safety audits with them and also done drills with them. Do some.
I wondered if the chief could speak about or if Dave would speak about the video surveillance and the, uh, ability for patrol cars or command vehicles to have access to schools via that process?
Yeah, I had mentioned that earlier. Um, the remote video, uh, process that we have available, all of our patrol cars, we can, uh, log in right off of our patrol laptops and we can log into the D-VARS, uh, that the school district has and we can view, the high school probably has the most, uh, effective camera system. We're able to look at those, uh, images. Um, basically we have a limit on those for if it was some type of violent incident, we would look in or possibly something, you know, an alarm in the middle of the night. Um, we occasionally get those up at the high school where you could, we check the outside of the, of the school building and, you know, the doors are all locked and we keep getting alarms. We can look in on the camera system. We haven't had a chance to, or necessarily had to use that yet, but it's available as an option.
Great. So we come at, we come at, um, this issue maybe on a little different level. For youth and family services, we really take a look at, um, helping the youth to do well in school and help them to feel present and that they can really function well there. And a lot of our services are really about keeping kids connected and feeling secure because when kids feel connected and they feel engaged in their community, they're going to do, they're really going to do pro-social behaviors and that's what you're trying to do. Some of the things that we do to help kids who are experiencing any kind of difficulty are, uh, we have mental health counselors in each of the schools. So we have one in each of the elementary schools, one in the middle school and one in the high school. And then we have a full-time drug and alcohol counselor at the high school and a, a full-time prevention counselor at the middle school. And many of the services are geared to help parents and teachers in, in dealing with what they see in kids, if they're worried about kids or seeing kids falling through the cracks or maybe not as connected as they could be. But a lot of what we do is help kids, uh, be natural helpers and help kids identify when they should be concerned about a friend, if a friend is talking to them about anything. Um, we help, uh, de-stigmatize anything that kids might be going through so that, um, when kids don't feel happy that they're comfortable talking to it. One of the reasons why, um, the city and the department established this relationship 20 years ago was that kids, if anything's going on with them, will reach out to somebody with whom they feel comfortable. And those are most likely people in their environment and most likely it's the school setting. So that's why we're there. Um, our, our mental health services, we try to connect with every youth. And at the beginning of the year in the elementary school, we got, all of our counselors go to every classroom. At the middle school, um, our counselors are actively involved with a web program where everyone belongs, making sure that the, um, all of the sixth grade, sixth graders have a smooth transition into middle school and then later on into high school. And at the high school, we have a natural helpers program and those are peer-chosen youth who kids say that they're comfortable speaking with. So, uh, the programs are really to get kids meaningfully engaged, um, and keep them engaged. We do classroom presentations at the high school level with the personal family relationships classrooms. We participate with the bridges programs. We try to have our staff dovetail their efforts with anything that you're doing in a school to help your kids succeed because kids that are successful and that like their peers and like what's going on, again, are going to do pro-social behaviors and they're not going to act out and they're not going to be violent. So that's what we want to see. And our prevention for drug and alcohol treatment, a lot of our prevention is really, again, that connection piece, making sure that when we recognize kids not doing well socially, that we can pull them back in. And, um, we do it, uh, most of our programs are gender population programs, which means we blend kids in with other kids because these are their peers, so we don't want to separate anybody. Um, and then our drug and alcohol treatment is for, you know, those are for the kids that really are involved in some kind of use and that's where we want to be most careful. Mental health by itself doesn't increase any likelihood of violence or anything you'd be concerned about, but that with the drug and alcohol use does increase. So that's where we spend a lot of our efforts, um, for treatment is with kids who are actively involved. Um, you know, unfortunately, those, that's not the majority of our kids. Our kids are engaged and they, um, we have a school that really works on welcoming kids and so we're, we're, our programs really work well together with you. And then our communities that care efforts. In the past year to five years, you've seen a lot focused on, on the drug and alcohol use and reducing underage drinking. And over the next four years, you'll see it move more toward safety behaviors in general. And you're seeing all communities move toward this, that reducing underage drinking is also about not having kids smoke marijuana, which is having kids use, uh, use seat belts at all times, not smoke. You're really moving to this culture of safety. Um, so our efforts will be going there as well. But on the whole, we're really, the, the real thrust of our services are to work with school, work with parents and to keep kids connected because when they're connected, they'll do well. The last item is youth concerns and this is a group of professionals in the community. It involves the school district, it involves youth and family services, the police, uh, we have fire there, we have people from the domestic violence networks, uh, around the area, Youth Theater Northwest, anybody who touches youth in our community, Boys and Girls Club. We come to this meeting, we do it about once every other month during the school year and so that we can share information, we can look at trends, we can say, what are you doing, what's going on, how can we support each other? And really it's, it's to kind of keep track of any kids that we're concerned about and to make sure that our programs are complementary. And if somebody's doing something, there's some way that we can work together to enhance that. So, um, all of us together and youth concerns really tries to build this network for your kids and, and it works well. It's a very coordinated effort and you have a lot of very engaged kids.
And I guess I'd say as we open this up now for discussion, I'll just want to highlight something I've heard a couple of times tonight and that was from council members and school board members, and that was the recognition of the identical borders that we have. So we serve the identical population and what that means, you know, as far as our work relationship goes. Excuse me, but perhaps even more important than that recognition is just the culture we have at the staff level anyhow, and I see it at the council and board member of collaboration. And I heard Gary talk about it earlier, but it's, it's just how we operate. If something of any significance happens at the school, I expect a call from Gary. I, and I get that evenings or weekends and that works the other way too. We call each other, we talk to each other. And also with the SRO, with the school, uh, personnel, Cindy's folks with the school personnel, the drug and alcohol person with school personnel, when we have lockdowns, um, Dave and I met with, uh, this was at St. Monica's a few months ago. We meet with them afterwards and talk about that. So it really is a, um, just worth reemphasizing again, the culture we have in, in the city with the school as well as city, city staff of just, I mean, we all, you know, we're in this together truly and it, it works very, very well. So with, with that note, I guess I'd say, open this up for discussion, happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. And I think it's great to see the, as Gary and Rich already alluded to, the cooperations going on and, and it's good to see how proactive the school district has been in, in the wake of Sandy Hook. Um, but the, one of the reasons that this got on the agenda is, is obviously the concern about guns. And, and as a, as a city government, we're very restricted in what we can do in the state of Washington because basically the area of gun safety and, um, regulation of the sale of guns is, is an area that only the, the state has jurisdiction over. So it, what we can, what we can do- So, it, what we can, what we can do as a city, and potentially as a school district, is make requests upon the state legislature to do things, on one hand. But secondly, I, I guess the more immediate thing we can do is, are there gun safety programs that we should be initiating in our community? We've, in the 14 years I've been on the council, I, I can honestly say that we've, we've never talked about gun safety, and what the role of, of the Mercer Island Police, or the Mercer Island City Government or School District should be in terms of working with our, working with those citizens who choose to purchase guns to make sure that they're locked properly, they're stored away properly, they're not, they're just handled properly, that kids don't end up getting access to them. So, I'd be curious, both from the staffs of, primarily from, from the city police, but also from, from Tony, as to what, what should we be doing? I mean, is it something we should be doing more now, in, in the wake of what's been going on?
Well, I was actually asked that question in an email from a citizen who asked, should we be, should the police department be conducting handgun safety or long gun safety? I talked to my range master about that, we had a pretty lengthy conversation about that specific topic, because, you know, I have firearms instructors, this is what they do. In fact, I was there this morning, and some will be there tomorrow. And after a while, and the conversation turned to the fact that, you know, there are actual gun ranges, in, two of them, in Bellevue, that do this very thing. They teach gun safety, and they have the range right there to, to actually teach how to fire, how to use firearms safely. So, you know, we could do some sort of a tabletop thing, I'm not always sure how much value there is, unless you can actually then go handle that firearm and be comfortable with it. And I've said before in different meetings, I'm comfortable with, you know, people owning firearms, but responsible firearm ownership, at least in my mind, it does include familiarity with that firearm, so you're not afraid of it. And then safe storage, and hopefully, people are locking it up if they're not at home, because that's why criminals break into homes sometimes, is to find ammunition. We had one burglary a number of years ago, where we, we were notified of the burglary, we got there, surrounded the house, and we were able to make the arrest, but we, it was very clear they had been trying to pry into a gun safe, but they couldn't get access to the guns because they were in the gun safe. So, I will just take this opportunity, for those listening and watching, to please, if you have firearms, know how to use them, be comfortable with them, to your point, and also to lock them up. Dave, you want to mention this program, Cops and Docs?
Sure. Our school resource officer, starting several years ago, teamed up, I believe it with, is with King County Public Health, and with Harborview ER doctors, with this Cops and Docs program, where a doctor and the school resource officer would go into the high school, and they would provide gun safety education and talk about gun violence. And it's a, a program that's, they show some slides that are, are pretty adult-type slides, you know, advising about the dangers of, and of not handling guns safely, and, and what a gun can do, and, you know, just education for our, our high school students, because occasionally, you will get high school students or young adults with weapons and have accidents from not having that knowledge or mishandling those weapons, and that was one of the goals of, of that program. So, and we still, I believe we still teach that program. We've also handed out gun locks in, in the past, also to our community members. I believe we still may have those available, so.
But that's, I mean, from my standpoint, it, at least, I think that it would be worthwhile for the council to understand what programs we do still have in place, and also what, what additional programs the council may want to consider. It's, this is, this is an area which we haven't tackled as a council before, and I think that, you know, it's, that school district's authority is obviously very limited. I mean, they're, if, if we're going to do something with our, with our residents in terms of improving gun safety and, and making sure that guns don't end up being misused, then it's going to have to come from the city council for the, pretty much for the most part. The other part of my question, I guess, was whether there's anything you feel is, is from a law enforcement standpoint, or whether you feel this is just too political a question, in terms of whether we should be asking our legislature to, to take any additional steps from a, from a gun, gun safety standpoint?
Well, as you recognize, it very, very quickly becomes pretty political on this, and you have people feeling strongly on both sides of that discussion. The latest I hear is that there may be some federal legislation dealing with mandatory background checks for all gun purchases. As it stands now, the only time, well, and, and this will take me a moment to explain, so bear with me. When you purchase a handgun from a licensed dealer in the state, they have to run your name, and give you five days, and if, provided you're okay to own that gun, there's a five-day, I think designed to be a cooling-off period, and then you can get your gun. Rifles, it does not apply. At gun shows, they don't have to do any sort of a background check. If I'm, if I'm just selling some guns, and in the state law, it defines, I think it says occasionally, so if I occasionally sell guns, you walk up to me, give me a hundred bucks, or 400 bucks, whatever I say it's for sale for, and here's your gun, and off you go. So, people talk about a gun registration, we almost have, to a certain extent, a de facto registration, only in that if you purchase a handgun from a licensed dealer, there will be a registration, your name will be registered with that gun. But if you in turn sell it, there's no mandate that you report that sale, and the name of the person you sold it to. So, therein lies a healthy debate on, do we have registrations for all guns? Is, is what we have now good enough? And, you know, we, I could start getting, giving personal opinions, but I don't know that that's of value here for this discussion. I think that is, like you suggest, that at the state level, this needs, and federal level, needs to be hammered out.
Let's go to Brian, and then Mike, and I think we're out of time after that, so.
Well, I just want to thank you for your presentation, and, and for all that fantastic work you're doing on, across the spectrum, from the school resource officers to the community's that care program, and work on drug and alcohol prevention, as, as well as the security audit itself. And also thank the city for the, you know, ongoing commitment of the resources that, that fund this. It, you know, allows us to direct more resource into the classroom, but also have these very robust programs that are important for, for protecting our kids. Specifically on the safety audit, it was great to hear the, you know, steps that are being taken with regard to the security cameras, and the door locks, and, and the physical security. But one of the questions is, is the, is the security personnel adequate, in your opinion? Or is that something, did you, did you look at that in terms of the amount of police presence, or the security officers in the schools? Is there enough, you know, enough people there to, you know, to complement that and provide an adequate level of safety, or is that something that we need to continue to look at?
Let me answer a piece of that. When you talk about, is there the appropriate number of officers in the school, do we have, do we have that number right? I, I think, given our resources, and, and my familiarity with this community and the schools, I think the school resource officer at the high school is great, and I know he gets to the middle school when he can, and crest, as recently as this last Monday, Gary and I were talking about, a way to sensibly get more officers, maybe in the elementary schools, on a careful, limited basis, because I realize in the discussions with Gary, it can create alarm. If there's a police officer at the school, and a parent comes to pick up a child, and there's a police car sitting there, if they're not accustomed to that, or not understanding why that police car is there, I know that it can create alarm. So, being mindful and cognizant of that, we're looking at a, a way to slowly, carefully, maybe stand up, I don't know if I call it a program, but stand up, a way in which we can get some officer, some increased officer presence in the elementary schools. So, starting with that, and obviously, we have the SRO at the high school, middle school, and crest, and then, I know Tony, maybe he speaks to the school security officer you have at the high school. So, we're making progress, I would say, a good progress as far as at least covering all the schools, including the elementary schools. And Tony, I don't know if you speak to Kelly?
I would just, to weigh in, Ed, I, we are talking about that. We're talking about whether we have the right number of hours. So, we do have a high school security officer who has other duties beyond safety. He's patrolling parking lots, and giving parking tickets, and doing other things, but we're actually looking at whether or not we need some hours dedicated to each campus. And so, that's something that we're looking at, we're studying.
Mike?
Thank you. Did I understand your, your first response, training is, with an active shooter, is conducted with students, or has been conducted with students in the school?
We have, actually, kids from the drama program, because they're more realistic. They, they know how to act, they, they're in the drama program, maybe even YTN, where's Manny? I don't know about that. So, yeah, we, we do drills with, I mean, students, but they're, they're.
So, the training isn't done necessarily with a, a full house of students there?
No. I mean, we, we do these trainings when school is on break, and we have access to the schools, because, again, I mean, just the concern for alarm, when you see heavily armed officers with rifles running, I mean, so yes, we do the training, and it's with students, certain students who are spooled up on what to do and what to expect.
Right. But it's without the students, so I can understand, there's pros and cons to that. I don't mean to, to get too much into that. The next thing I want to lead to, I'm familiar with the response rates of our lumbering fire trucks, around six minutes, and, you know, we have a, an SRO at, at, at least one school, he may go around. So, my question is kind of to give a sense of, if we do, you know, if there is a need for an active shooter, that there is an active shooter, you've got three patrol cars, number of patrol cars, you know, what, what's the response rate, once that call? What do you think your response rate is of having an officer at a school, getting down to business, if you will?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a little bit more of a complex question than just a simple answer as far as minutes go, so maybe like four or five minutes, maybe. But the reason it's a little more complicated, or takes more explaining, is because ever since Columbine, Columbine changed the way police departments respond to active shooter incidents. And by active shooter, just so everyone's clear, that's somebody in the school shooting, taking, hurting, taking kids' lives. So, whereas the traditional model was on a, on a scene such as that, officers would come, surround the building, call in the SWAT team, they would come in heavily armed, and get all this equipment, and then go in. Obviously, the problem is time. If these people are taking lives, you don't want to wait for a SWAT team to come there. So, this whole motion of active shooters, you train officers to operate in a certain way, with only the three, if that's what you have, with a limited number of officers to go in there, and their primary and perhaps only objective is to stop the threat. And it's difficult training, because we're accustomed to helping someone if they need help in front of you, and this says, just ignore everything but the sound of the firearm going off. So, you know, the exact time, I don't know, but it's within, you know, obviously depending where the units are stationed in the city, where they're driving around, you know, we try to keep fairly spread out when we do our patrolling, but five minutes is, is sort of a guess I'm giving you. But then, you know, grab your stuff out of the trunk, put the helmet on, we have extra equipment in the trunk for these events, and so it's, within is, fairly quickly.
Yeah, I always kind of think it's, when I see a police officer, one of our police officers issuing a, a ticket for, you know, we have the issues down at South Mercer for dogs, and having, or issuing a ticket for something, I, I don't think our citizens appreciate the dual capacities that our officers have to have, to be, you know, they are, the mundaneness of enforcing leash laws, and then at a moment's notice could be really going to a situation where none of us, you know, worst dreams would, would, would imagine. So, well done to your.
Thank you.
To your officers on that.
Okay, with that, I think we're, we are out of time. I want to thank you very much, and we all want to thank you very much for, for all you, the work you do, and for coming tonight to talk to us about it. It's much appreciated. By the way, this is the first time we've done this without a facilitator, and hopefully, the two of us have gotten through it all right, from, from the perspective of those around us. If you, if you want a facilitator next time, just say.
Yeah, you can quietly send us a.
No, I think, you want to just do the final wrap here?
Well, and again, I just feel like the theme of tonight has been partnership and collaboration, and I, I feel like we have that among, with, among the school board and the city council, and, and in so many other ways. Just hearing about your work together, I knew some of it, but I certainly didn't know all of it, and it's, it's inspiring and comforting to hear about everything that you're doing. And then to the pool, I look at Alice and John, and I think, how did we get so lucky that you were in our community, willing to take this on, and then to see what an amazing job you've done? So, I think we're all very, can feel very fortunate tonight, that we get to live and work here on Mercer Island. So, thank you, everybody, for a great meeting, and thank you, Bruce, for doing the most of the heavy lifting on running the meeting, I appreciate that.
Hey, Bruce, before we hit the gavel, I, I promised I'd bring this up, and so I will. Many students within the school district were able to participate in an event called We Day on the 27th of March. And for those who aren't familiar with it, go home and Google WeDay.com, and it truly is a Super Bowl for social change that starts in the elementary schools and goes all the way through the high school. And I had the privilege of having one of my kids attend, and then I helped organize and volunteer for the thing. But Google it and look at the event, because it's like a rock concert and a Super Bowl, all in one venue. So, imagine Key Arena filled with 15,000 kids that all earned their way to get there. They weren't getting free tickets. They had to do local volunteer work in the neighborhood, and then also a global project. So, it's a local and global effort, and it's a movement that was started by two 12-year-olds up in Canada 15 years ago, and has, and has now come to the United States. Seattle was the first venue, and they're going to go to Minneapolis. But I anticipate it'll be back every year in Seattle. And this is, to me, the epitome of collaboration between a school and a city, in that what I'm going to work with in my other part-time job, is to see if we can do a We Day just on Mercer Island. Because it reinforces all the things that we're about, both at this diocese and in the audience, in trying to make our communities and our planet a better place.
That's great, that's, willing to hear that you're working on that.
Good wrap-up.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right, we are.
And then, school board, we'll take a five-minute break. I mean, a nine-minute break.